Good afternoon. It's 4:02 PM and we are calling this Liberation and Freedom Committee to order with a quorum of members in the chamber. If you happen to be here for a zoning Board of Appeals meeting, that has been moved upstairs. We'll start with public comments for items on the agenda, and public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual. And public comment, as noted on the agenda, is to address matters appearing on the agenda. So, the committee, just so you know, is not allowed to respond to questions or comments during the allotted public comment period. And when you do come up, or if you're giving comments virtually, if you could please just state your name and address beforehand, and we'll be handling the timing, and we'll give you a 30-second at the end reminder before the time is up. So, we'll start with those who'd like to give public comments in the chambers first, and then move on to remote. Is there anyone who'd like to give public Yes, please, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak today. I look forward to welcoming our new neighbors to Wausau. My family is a military family. My husband is an Iraq War Vet who still serves. We believe it is imperative that we help those who helped, at great risk to their own lives and those of their families, helped our soldiers fight the war on terror, the same way the Hmong people helped our soldiers during the Vietnam War. Culturally diverse communities help foster awareness and provide us with opportunities to expand our knowledge and to be more welcoming and inclusive. We are a nation of immigrants. We have the ability to welcome all who come here looking for a better life. It would be disingenuous for me to say, however, that I'm not concerned for the safety and well-being of those who will be resettling here in Wausau. The struggle to pass the Marathon County Community for All Resolution shut a spotlight on the fear of the other that currently still exists here. Monday, a local radio show on WSAIU 550 AM encouraged listeners to show up and create some kind of disturbance and speak out against refugee resettlement. I'm pleased to see they're not, they may not have shown up today. But they stated issues about housing and not having enough housing for our own people. So, or that this bringing refugees to Wausau was the city's way of punishing the county for not passing the Community for All Resolution. This is dangerous language. I remember the way the Hmong community was treated when they first moved to Wausau. I'd like to think we've learned from that, learned how to do better, because when we know better, we do better. I truly believe the majority in this community supports this initiative. Knowledge helps to extinguish fear. To be truly successful, we must commit to learn about different cultures and to learn from lessons of the past. But we will also need to find the courage as individuals to speak up when we encounter those who act out of ignorance and fear, and make their and make the voices of inclusion louder than the voices of hate. It is up to all of us to make Wausau a safe and welcoming place for our new neighbors and for those from marginalized communities who already live here. Thank you.
Thank you. And could you please state your name and address for the record?
Christine Thalm, 3312 North 11th Street, Wausau.
Thank you.
Hi, and my name is Amy Leonoff. I live at 906 Magendoe Street. So, I'm here tonight to talk to the committee about the resettlement of Afghani refugees in our community. Some people may recognize me from recent county board meetings where I spoke in favor of the Community for All Resolution. A number of very fine people from our community spoke in opposition of CFA stating that there is no racism or bigotry in this county, and all are welcome. It's curious that those folks are not here tonight to express their wholehearted support for Wausau welcoming these immigrants to our community. While the county recognized that we already welcome everyone, and there is no racism or any other discrimination here, and did not feel the need for a CFA resolution, I do want to remind everyone here that Wausau's website does expressly communicate that the city seeks to be inclusive, a message that's supported by a mayoral proclamation. These folks who will be joining our community have been through horrors we can't begin to imagine, targeted by terrorists in their own homes and communities, forced to leave the only homeland most have ever known, leaving behind extended family, friends, and close-knit communities. They have come to the US seeking safety and solace in a land where they will be seen as foreign in their language, their customs, and their culture, where many would treat them with suspicion and distrust. But not our community. This county has proclaimed that all are welcome, resolution or no resolution. We know that refugees are vetted much more thoroughly than immigrants, and we have compassion for all that they have been through. So, I've come today to ask all good Christians and decent people alike to join me in expressing support for the new neighbors we'll be welcoming in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with public comment in the chambers? And online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, my name is Calo, and I reside at 620 and 1/2 Lincoln Avenue. So, I'm here today just to remind the committee that there is a difference between an immigrant and a refugee. A refugee is a person who has been forced to leave their country because of a war or because they are being persecuted for their beliefs. And I think it's a very important distinction to make, because the refugees, they don't have an option. They're either stay in their country and possibly perish due to what's going on in their country, or, you know, there's no other option but to come here in a country that would welcome them. So, I just want to remind the committee of the differences between an immigrant and a refugee. In addition, I just wanted to say as well that hearing the radio program on WSAIU the other day, it's very dangerous, the language that they're using for their listeners, that to come to a city meeting and to create a spectacle is, as a Wausau School Board member, over the past year and a half, that type of language has been very dangerous. And so, I would hope that those, the radio programs stop speaking in that manner. It's a very dangerous language that they're using for their listeners, and I hope it stops. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That looks like everyone. Did we miss anyone? Anyone who'd like to give comment? Well, thank you. Thank you for the input. So, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the 3821 Minutes. They're in your packet. Any questions or concerns? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to accept.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Herr. Second from Mr. Norfleet. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes. And we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Educational Presentation on Refugee Resettlement, ECDC. Ms. Gilkinson.
Thank you so much for welcoming me to this meeting this evening. Very pleased to be with you all and have this opportunity to share with you a bit more about the refugee resettlement program that is coming to Wausau. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, sure. I'm speaking into my microphone. Let me increase, increase my voice. Is that, is that better? Okay, great. So, I have a presentation for you, so I think I'm, you'll be seeing it in the room, and I'll also share my screen. So that we can read it better. So, ECDC is opening, as you are aware, a multicultural community center in Wausau, Wisconsin, in order to resettle refugees in your community. And I appreciated the comments at the beginning, especially from Ka, really mentioning that it's important to recognize at the start of this who refugees are. And as she rightly pointed out, they are people who have been forced to leave their country to escape war persecution based on their religious, political, or sexual orientation, or other types of affiliations or aspects of their identity. So, these are people, as she said, who have fled because they were in grave danger for those reasons. And refugees come from many different countries around the world, and again, they have fled to usually neighboring countries as a first step. It's important to recognize that less than 1% of all refugees are resettled to a third country, and that the US really does play a role providing that beacon of hope, because we have 26, more than 26 million people currently living as refugees, which is more than any other time in history. The US is not the only country that accepts refugees, but historically has been a leader because of the values that our nation has been founded on. ECDC has been a national resettlement agency since 1991, and has, through a network of affiliates and branch offices across the country, has resettled more than 60,000 people from different countries around the world in those years. One of the common questions that we often get is, who decides which refugees come to the US? What is the process? So, it's important to note that the US does have this long history of welcoming refugees. Again, even before its founding, as one of the other commentators rightly noted, that we are a country of people who are fleeing different types of persecution and wanting a better life. Especially after World War II, that was another time when a great number of refugees were admitted to the United States. But in 1980, the Refugee Act was passed, which is the current legal framework for refugee resettlement in the US. And as part of that, every year, the president, in consultation with Congress, does set a number called the Presidential Determination of Refugees, kind of a quota, that a maximum number that will be allowed in, and it also gives priority to certain populations based on the global need and circumstance. So, in order to qualify, first refugees have to be legally determined to have refugee status, and this is done by UNHCR. And what that means is that they have to really investigate to see whether or not this individual has really been persecuted and really cannot return to their home country because of those threats being real. And after really classifying someone legally as a refugee, they will still consider other options before resettlement. As I said, resettlement is really the last option, and it's only for the most vulnerable cases. They will also try to explore whether that individual could be integrated into the third country that they fled to, or even repatriated back in their home country. So, once approved as a refugee and determined to be a good candidate for resettlement in the United States, there is a referral process to the United States Refugee Admissions Program, or USRAP. And once they are approved, they come through the Reception and Placement Program, which is one of the programs that ECDC implements through the Department of State's Bureau of Population, Refugees, and Migration. So, what is the determination process like? As one of the commenters mentioned, it is a very lengthy process. It takes, on average, two years, but can often take longer than that, because, as I mentioned, there are multiple steps and multiple agencies. First is the Refugee Eligibility Interviews with UNHCR. After that referral process, there's extensive background checks with all of the national agencies within the US government to vet these individuals. And after that preliminary approval, there are medical examinations and cultural orientation that they undergo overseas as they await to be booked for travel by the International Organization for Migration. So, it's a very long process with very many steps, and I would reiterate again that even before travel, there is another round of security checks that are done. So, it is very extensive. In terms of how it's decided which city refugees go to, it's important to note that many refugees coming to the US do have what's called a US tie, or a contact. It can be a family member, a more distant relative, or even just a friend that is noted as a US tie. And so, that location does influence the placement of that individual, so that they can be closer to a support network. So, there are nine national refugee resettlement agencies, ECDC being one of them, and all of us, again, have a contract with the State Department, and we have targets that we meet, that we strive to meet. So, when, when we get notification of cases that have been approved and booked for travel, we have allocations to decide which agency is best placed to serve that individual. And after getting assigned cases to ECDC, we then look at our network and decide which of our locations. We have had 15 sites for the past several years, and that now with the addition of Wausau and Brattleboro, Vermont, we are now expanding to 17 sites, where we're opening new offices. And we will look at that network and really see, based on language capacity, housing availability, again, family relationships, existing community groups, where is the best placement for that individual. So, there's a national allocations process, and then an internal allocations process to decide that. And this is just a map showing the resettlement sites that I mentioned, the 15, and then we have Wausau, as well as Brattleboro, Vermont. And there are four more sites that we are expecting to scale up to in the coming year, though we, right now, are in a cost extension period, and we don't have the FY22 full budget, so those partnerships are not yet, or those sites are not yet active. But we're fortunate that Wausau has been given the go-ahead by the State Department. So, what kinds of services are provided? What does ECDC provide? What does the community, how does the community support this program? So, the goal of the Reception and Placement Process Program is to help refugees achieve economic self-sufficiency through employment and linkages to service providers as soon as possible. So, it is a short program period of just 30 to 90 days, which is just really the very, the initial resettlement period. And we at ECDC have a responsibility to ensure that all the services listed here that you can see are provided. So, housing that is furnished and equipped with basic items, including, you know, initial stocking of food and food allowance for those first days, seasonal clothing for all family members, a small bit of pocket money. Then, we help them to get enrolled in all of the benefits programs that they qualify for, and access health screenings, and all of health services that they need. As I said, employment is a key goal, so we assist them with getting ready for that, and accessing employment services, and even transporting them to job application, to job interviews and job training. We also make sure that adults get enrolled in English language programs, and children get enrolled in school. And we assist with other necessary paperwork that they have to file in terms of change of address, once they have settled or selective service, and things like that. And then there's also cultural orientation curriculum that we ensure is followed, so that they understand what is the resettlement agency, what is public assistance, basic information about US laws and culture, how is they safe, those types of things as well. So, in terms of how the community is involved, it is a very important and close collaboration with the service providers in the community. So, again, ECDC plays a role of case management, which is really about linking these individuals to the existing service providers, and making sure that they are well-served, so that they can integrate successfully and become self-sufficient. So, we do, we have already started, and will continue to be meeting with these partners as a group and also individually, in order to provide updates, exchange information, share best practices, and work, you know, solve problems that come up along the way. We are also actively working to recruit volunteers and community groups. In fact, just last night, we had a cosponsorship information session with individuals who have expressed interest. And this is a program where community volunteers form a team and commit to raising funds, collecting donations, in-kind donations, and providing mentorship and accompaniment, so that they'll be matched with a particular family, and support them from the time that they arrive up to nine months after they have settled in Wausau. So, we really believe this program is going to be powerful in helping the longer-term integration, and also really just helping that, the community to take an active role in getting to know these newcomers and really be welcoming. And we believe that the success stories of those experiences will also help the broader community better understand the positive effects of having these newcomers here. So, we just wanted to end by recapping some new developments, which is, which hopefully you have been aware of, but ECDC has been approved to resettle Afghan evacuees through this new Afghan Placement and Assistance Program, through all of our resettlement sites. So, that is the 15 that I mentioned, plus Wausau and Brattleboro, Vermont. And as I said, we are still waiting for the full FY22 budget approval, but we have been given authorization to resettle in Wausau through the cost extension. And we are in the process of hiring our director for, for the Wausau Multicultural Community Center. So, just wanted to add, just for clarity, to be, to be sure that you understand, that we are expecting Afghans to be coming to Wausau, but not exclusively Afghan. So, we are expecting refugees through the regular program from other places around the world as well. So, as I mentioned, those are just two different programs, and we are expecting both of them to be happening in Wausau. So, what happens next? Again, we've had public education events. We're hiring the director. We're having these cosponsorship information sessions. In the coming months, we will be opening the office, training these cosponsorship groups, preparing logistics, and then welcoming the first families. We're expecting 10 or more individuals before the end of the calendar year, and those regular stakeholder meetings will be taking place. Starting from January, that's when we're expecting to have the, the full budget for FY22, and we'll be scaling up and expecting 75 or more individuals. So, I hope that that has been helpful as an overview for, for you. And if there's any questions, happy to stay on, stay on the line. But thanks for the time.
Thank you very much for that presentation and overview, Ms. Gilkinson. Some, any questions from committee members on anything that was presented, or other information you may have an interest in? Well, thank you. And if, if we were to, or if citizens desired to seek more information about these efforts, or your organization, what would be the best method for them to do that? Ms. Gilkinson?
Yes, it was up on the, up on the screen. We do have a, an email address specifically for Wausau. So, it's wausainfo@ecdcus.org. So, that's a, that's an email address that specifically, that we are fielding right now at the headquarters level, but again, that the director wants on board, will, will be able to receive those messages as well. So, that's a great place that, for people to express an interest, or write a question, or other things like that, to be connected. And then again, that, that communication will also be passed off to the, the local director as well, once on board.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you for your time and for the presentation. We appreciate it.
You're most welcome. Thanks again for the invitation.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion and Possible Action on Goals and Objectives for the Committee. Now, in the, in the meeting packet, there was a kind of a foundational resolution that, that began this committee, and it was titled Creating the Mayor's Welcoming and Inclusivity Committee, and that occurred under the prior administration. I do have, if someone would like a hard copy, if you don't have one in, in front of you, I do have some copies of that. But I think, I'll tell you too, that as we discuss goals and objectives, I think it would be useful if we kind of looked at them in relation to this resolution, and, and how the committee began. And I will tell you that also in that resolution is, is the reason that I'm sitting in this chair today, because by default, when our last chair stepped down, the resolution indicates that the, the council member appointed to the committee takes that chair position, at least for now. So, that's, that's why I'm, I'm chairing this evening and moving forward until that would change. But I'd just like to kind of open it up for committee discussion on, on thoughts and feelings about goals and objectives for the committee. It's, the committee has been, you could say, on pause, or there'd been some delays over the last several months due to various things. So, we're not starting from scratch, but I think we are in a place where, looking in the context of this resolution, at a place where we can kind of mark up our, our goals and objectives. So, I'd be very interested in hearing from committee members.
Is this Thalm? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name's Chris Norfleet. Part of what we were hoping, that we are still hoping to make this about, is how do we serve the whole community? Right? In fact, there are multiple ethnicities in this community, right, with, with history, and with need for city to be able to help address their integration, right? And I think part of what we should be looking at, I don't know if it's going to, you know, stay, but part of what we need to look at, is how do we get particular communities to be able to represent what they want as a community? One of the, one of my pet peeves is when people tell other communities what they need. But we never help them organize to figure out what they want as a community, and what is our goal to help them achieve it, right? I don't wanna, I don't think our role is to assimilate people, but to integrate people. And integration is where people get to keep who they are and who they were before they got here, and integrate that into a peaceful process. I don't want people to have to share their history, their culture, in order to find themselves at home here. As a black person, that's a real serious problem. So, I think it is imperative, not just that you welcome people on a superficial level, but that we create a, a balanced approach to not just but that we create a a balanced approach to not just what they need to bring to the table to resettle, but how we can embrace whether it's their language, whether it's their dress, whether it's what kind of industry they like to pursue in this community. But I think we can't allow people to keep immigrating and moving here and not tell them about the culture of here, except the things that we like to tell them about. I think it would have been beneficial for the Mung community to have a really efficacious understanding of the black community as well as Wassa, as well as the Latino community, because it helps us all to be able to communicate. That's the goal I'm shooting for, is communication, cooperation, collaboration. We're gonna run into difficult things, but if we communicate, we cooperate. Our goal is to cooperate, not to sit up here and create hostility, but to cooperate to solve problems, right? I heard somebody say as we started this, that there's already pushback. I'm not, you know, I didn't join this to push back and forth, but to make sure that those who come to this community are not afraid to be here. That's my goal, to be here, to live here, to be happy here, is to confront issues and prove that we can solve those issues, not exacerbate them, not profit off of them, and not run from them. And I think we have that capability if we really recognize that community needs representation, none of us can be it. We gotta get representation in those seats. And they can't consistently be all white. If we're talking about the Mung community, I wanna see Mung people. If we're talking about the Latin community, I wanna see Latin people. If we're talking about eh whatever community, they need to feel comfortable to show up here. That should be a part of our mandate, to get the community there, 'cause once they can sit there for us, they can sit there for the city council, the economic development, the educational processes, and that's the goal, to get people to participate in this process for me. So.
Thank you. Any other comments for from committee members? But I would note, and I think as we discuss these items about uh goals and objectives, and even uh the later items on on opportunities for education and so forth, uh one thing that we can do, and and I've been kind of advised by uh the city attorney's office that we are an advisory committee, and uh what we do here, we we, I would say we we have quite a bit of leeway in in what we do and how we approach the work as a committee, because when we look at this resolution, we've got some whereas's, and even with some of the things that Mr. Norfleet just mentioned, I think uh there's relevance and ways that we can we can act upon those sentiments. So when we look at the the second whereas, it says the city will identify the issues and barriers to equality, for example. So we've got uh identification. Then we also have in the next whereas, that uh the city will, through discussion and education, promote tolerance and acceptance of all people who choose to reside in or visit Wassa. So in addition to identification, we have uh promote or promotion. And uh also, in in the prior whereas, we've got educate, educate the public on diversity, inclusivity, and bias. And so, and I I think uh some of your sentiments, Mr. Norfleet, were a good prelude to uh discussing some of these things, because, well, we do have to abide by our foundational resolution. We have the flexibility, as long as we look at the definitions of how these terms are defined, we have, in my opinion, a great degree of flexibility on how we approach them as a committee. So I think moving forward, now that we're getting things going again, this is a time to really get things going again, and so we can stay within the context of our foundation, but also realize that as long as we're using legitimate definitions for these terms of identify, promote, and educate, uh there's really very little I see that we could not legitimately address in our realm. So I I know I was informed uh earlier this afternoon that there will be a meeting here at 5:10 after this meeting, so we don't have a great deal of time today, but I'd ask that in preparation for the next meeting on on that we'll probably re-agendize that and uh and and talk about it further. So thank you for your your input on that. Any other comments on uh on number uh five from the committee? Then we'll move along to uh number six, uh discussion and possible action on identifying issues and barriers to equality as per the resolution. So any thoughts from committee members on uh identifying issues and and barriers to Yes, please.
I think this is very um, they're all connected.
Ms. O'Uill, is your microphone on, or could you bring it a little closer?
Yes, is that better?
Uh yes, thank you.
Um I think based on what um Chris said just a few minutes ago, this is um almost kind of the same thing. How are we going to identify barriers and try to change them, or how are we going to create um strategy that is effective? And I also think, like Chris, that um community involvement is necessary, and it cannot be us and them. It has to be just us all together, working to find these, and I believe that we, as a committee, n- need to find ways to become more involved or make the community more involved, so we all can find those barriers. We can sit here and discuss the barriers we perceive, but if we hear the the big voice, the community, um I think we can get positive results. So I think community involvement is is very important, to be able to get what we want.
Thank you.
Okay, I was, I'm gonna chime here again, because, you know, I'm a big advocate of uh environmental justice, and I I believe it, I don't know if it's okay to talk about that subject here, but I believe that is one of those reasons I support it, is because it is about the inclusionary process of community. And for me, that's what we're tackling. The biggest thing we're tackling is to get people to feel free to be heard and to say what they want. I believe at the end of the day, nobody's gonna get everything they want, but nobody should have an expectation to always be rejected. And I think when you sit in those chairs long enough and you never feel like there's a chance that what you want is gonna come to fruition, you stop coming. So what our goal is, is to be able to use an environment of reaching out to community and let them know that a part of the process is failure and success. We gotta bring success to ethnic communities and people who don't feel like they've ever heard, not just the sentiment to an anemic, but I as a black person, I don't have a a big argument about what I can perceive as the uh barriers, and I I believe I'm probably accurate, and she would probably be accurate too, but at the end of the day, part of what we wanna be able to advise on is how to create social and economic peace. We can often live together, we can often earn together, but one of the biggest problems with ethnic growth is a peaceful process of social and economic coming together, not competing, but cooperating. So I think the uh environment of justice is is supposed to operate in a manner that where we are a conduit, not to be their voice, but a conduit to get them to come speak their mind. And then we can support that in 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 a way that that is efficacious for what they are asking about. But it's hard to move to the next step until we kinda achieve a greater level of participation uh by communities that that need and feel like they're not being heard.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
To me, as I do agree with my colleagues over there, another thing I do see that we have issue with is communication. A lot of the reports, a lot of the minutes are in English. A lot of my elders can't speak or can't read or speak English, but again, they're the top dogs in our community. We, the Mung community, have always lived up to a clan system, where even I report to somebody who is oversees my family, and my family reports to somebody who oversees the whole her clan. Those are the big dogs in Mung community, those are the big people that you want to sit there, they're the ones who needs to be here, they're the ones who need communication-wise. They're the ones that we have to accommodate, and we want them here. And to me, I do agree with both of you as well, but again, like, we should focus on communication, how to reach out to them, how to let them know, hey, we have a meeting today, let them know to let them know that this is the time and this is the place to be at.
Thank you. Yeah, your mic, Mr. Norfleet.
We go to the extent that where w- w- we put it in their language. We don't try to tell them learn English, not always, you know, some of us are just going to be the way they are, and if they want it in Mung, I don't know how, or in some other language, I don't know how it hurts anybody to make sure that information is delivered to them in Mung, if it means they're gonna participate. That that that's what it's about at the end of the day. Uh so yeah, I I totally agree with you.
Any additional comments? So what I I I took away from some of the committee discussion is with the issues and and the identification of issues and barriers to equality, some of it was community involvement, uh communication, including language, uh barriers, also various uh social and economic components and and uh participation in in relation to that. And uh I think as we're uh kind of digging into uh goals and issues for the committee, and we're looking at them in the uh the context of the resolution, I think it's it would be pertinent to ask uh the city attorney, if if you don't mind, Ms. Jacobson, uh we're we're talking about outreach and community participation. As an advisory committee in this context, uh do we have the uh opportunity and ability to 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 execute such outreach in the in the future? Would that be within our purview?
That's a really good question, um and I think you're headed in the right direction, and maybe because you report as a special committee to the council, you would consider when you reach that point of giving them a report or getting on the council agenda to report the work of your committee in identifying those goals and objectives, and then those issues and barriers. And if you had suggestions or proposals or plans to implement specific actions or activities in furtherance of implementing or reaching those goals, then I would report that to the council as well, and have them adopt that or encourage you to carry them out. That would be my suggestion.
Uh thank you for that information. So my, what does the committee think then on on putting some of these thoughts and feelings that we're discussing today into uh kind of a an informal or perhaps even formal kind of committee report? And we can do this uh uh almost in after each one of our meetings, we'll have to determine exactly how we do that, but then uh the sentiments here can be uh forwarded along to the council, and perhaps if it's something where we need to uh get some advisory opinion from that body on on what we can do, maybe that would help us start to do some of these community involvement initiatives or participation. How does that sound to the committee? Any thoughts or adjustments to to something like that?
I will be supportive of it. That way, we can always then ensure our community that, hey, we're doing our best to reach out to everybody, trying to accommodate, and then trying to make everybody understand. That way, even though we all speak different languages, we all understand the same thing, that what's going on in our community, and be supportive of each other.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, then uh we'll we'll uh we'll look into doing this, and uh I know there's uh been difficulty too with uh member schedules and so forth, but I think as as we get the momentum going, perhaps uh with some of these techniques, we'll be able to really really move the ball in a way that the committee uh has has not perhaps in the past. And uh Mr. Hurd, to your point about language as a as an issue and and barrier to equality, I think with our a- agendas and and uh in the context of the work we do, I I think we can lead by example, and I think one thing the uh the committee could ask for is to make sure that it's very clear on the agendas, that if uh interpretation or translation of any sort uh is needed, that we make that more explicit uh on our agendas, and uh perhaps uh as we move forward on these issues, we could even try to have uh some uh brief summaries of our our issues and so forth uh in language, uh as the committee would see beneficial. Uh how does that sound on that note?
That sounds good, and I think with that, we'll get a lot more people to participate with us, especially now that those who do listen don't understand what's going on, but with those interpreters and uh translations, we can have more uh audience and for them to understand what's going on, so we don't have to have such a misunderstanding among all of us.
Great, thank you. Well, excellent, then I, we won't uh take any uh any action per se uh tonight, uh but i- if there are there any additional comments on item six? And if not, we'll move on to item seven, discussion and possible action on opportunities for education uh as per the resolution, and uh we can start it off with um committee comments, thoughts?
You know, I do believe that as a committee, one of the functions should be to hold an event that welcomes people to come participate. I think this is something we should be taking a different approach, other than just we're policymakers, 'cause that's not what we are. We're community builders, basically. And so I think it would be very beneficial for us to hold an event outside this room, I don't know if that's possible or not, that where we can specifically speak to what we're doing here, and why a community should care at all. I'm 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 gonna be honest with you, I gotta convince myself why I care, why this is gonna work. I'm not convinced, but I'm gonna be here and do my best to be a part of it. The convincing comes when we do something, right? For me, it is all about doing something, and let's get off the ground and start being a part of the doing, you know? And so I think an event, and you know, we don't have money, and we probably need to talk about, rather than that such a committee should have a budget, of course, the last time I was on it, that's that was my specific thing, is, and I don't know if the attorney can speak to it, I'm I'm keeping my head down when I say money and attorney, 'cause I've watched her before, and that, don't thrill her off this, so.
The finance director.
Yeah, oh, but, you know, in order for us to be able to facilitate an event- Yeah, oh, but, you know, in order for us to be able to facilitate an event, I think we do have to be able to host something that draws people, and so they know what's the importance of a diversity committee in Wausau. Not in Marathon County, not in Eau Claire, not in Chicago, not in Milwaukee, but right here. Because this is our backyard. I'm not trying to imitate anybody. I don't even think there's anybody worth imitating. I believe we are trying to chart new waters, and we wanna do it. And so I wanna put our focus on what this diversity committee is, or is not going to accomplish. And I'm wanting to accomplish something. So, I think it starts with reintroducing this committee in a communication-formal way to the community again. We've been here for a while, and I think a lot of people have lost, like, what is that? So I think it would be beneficial to reintroduce this committee to the community, so we can do just what he said, find out how to create that environment with the, because not everybody operates the same. Some communities got clans, some people got other kinda big dogs. So, we can't just say, well, we're gonna do it this way, and that's how it works. Nope, we're trying to evolve with the community, right? And so, I think, before we can make people feel uncomfortable with coming here, we gotta make them feel comfortable with just knowing what we're doing, you know? Knowing what we're doing, seeing some passion in our eyes that we care. Because that brings people back, when they know you care. That's where I'm at with it. I think that would be one of the best first starts, is to really reintroduce this committee to community, and let's put some of those principles in there, communication, cooperation, you know, I mean, they don't have to run, you know that, right? You know, some of those bedrock things, that even with a resolution, building trust is what we're about. We gotta build trust. Communication is about trust. The resolution is great, but until we get people to buy in that we're going to be about what this is saying, you know, we gotta remember, history is, is that people have showed up, and it hasn't worked out. So.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you, I wanna thank you for that comment. I appreciate that, because it touches on and ties directly into what I'd said before, and I failed to say, and was thinking about it afterwards, and then you brought it up. And the reason why I suggested that you, you know, come up with your list, or your report to council, is because they are the ones with the budget that can authorize staff assistance, or money to carry out an event, or purchase insurance, or things of those nature, which a special committee, any special committee, doesn't have necessarily. So you shouldn't feel hampered or restricted in your efforts at all. I would consider the sky the limit, but that's why you report what you find, because you're digging deeper into these issues, to the council, and you come up with, you know, you've got broad sweep kind of territory here to study, but once you've established your goals and objectives, and your issues and barriers, and come up with proposals for overcoming those, like I said, that's when you get the report to the council, and the buy-in from them, to accept your report, and maybe authorize something specific that this committee has recommended, because then you'll have all that, you'll have the adoption of the city of that event, or whatever it is that you proposed putting on. And that's the way I see things that you recommend getting implemented. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Of course. Mr. Hurd?
I do agree with my colleague, Chris, over there. One of the big things, like he did say, is that before we can actually serve the community, we need to show the community that we are a committee for them. By showing that, we have to participate in their activities. About a month ago, we had a Latino soccer tournament by Brookmeyer Park over there. I was glad to be a participant with that event. It was nice to see the community come out, and it was nice to see that, hey, even though it was a Latino event, they hired Mung security personnel to come and keep their safety. To me, that is a great event, to where, you know, you see multiple ethnicities, multiple members of the community come together to ensure the safety, and the process, and the good deeds of the event. To me, being part of that shows that, hey, we as a committee, we're interested in every single ethnicity out there, every single event, no matter how big or small. And one way is to just be there, and understand that, hey, these are their concerns, these are what they want, and we are supportive of them, by being there with them.
Could you use the microphone, please, Mr. Northfleet?
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Angela.
Angela. So like, what he's saying, when people in public, I want them to know that Angela is on the diversity committee, or the liberation and freedom committee, you know? I want them to be able to say, hey, oh, hey, you're, let's talk about this, because that's what we're supposed to be about, you know? So yeah.
Thank you. So, am I understanding correctly that as we talk about these last three items, that goals and objectives, the identifying issues and barriers, and then action on education, am I, I get the feeling from the committee that multiple members feel that in order for us to kinda make that determination, we should be interfacing with the public, both first and in the process, to try to kind of garner some of that from the community itself, rather than kind of make unilateral determinations here in the council chambers? Am I, is that an accurate assessment?
Yes, you are right, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Oh, well, then, and I know the clock is ticking for us, but I've also heard that there's been kind of a feeling of inaction from the committee in the past, and not necessarily because there hasn't been a desire for action, maybe just more of a logistical challenge in certain ways, but if that's how the committee feels, perhaps we can take these things tonight, and we can translate them into action, and we can pursue interfacing with the community in a way that our resolution affords us to do, with, of course, council review, and perhaps some degree of approval. So, I guess I would maybe suggest we take these ideas tonight. We can have them put into a committee report from the meeting, I believe. Is that that viable? Yes, we can do that. And then, with that, perhaps we'll start to tease out and send approval, a request for approval, or information they would need to grant such approval for setting up a public interfacing event, where we can kind of do needs identification, and objective identification from the community, rather than just kind of unilaterally deciding ourselves. And then, I think also, building in the comments from committee members, we could make sure that when we do that, if we are successful in gaining that type of approval, we make sure this event is in language, in culture, that it's as relevant and impactful as it can be to all the communities in town. Does that, is that the idea? Do I need to take a vote on that? Okay, we require no vote, so we will do that. And that.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say that you don't need to report every month. I mean, the resolution doesn't require that. Your minutes, of course, will be public record, and will be posted to the website, but when you feel like you get to a point where you wanna make a formal report, and you've adopted this list of items, then, like I said, this committee does not have any independent authority or budget, but when you feel it's appropriate in time, and you're ready, then I'd take that report to council, and I would have that agendized on the council agenda, a report from this special committee.
Excellent, thank you for that information. And just based, I think, on the committee history, and perhaps some of the internal politics at City Hall, I think we should do those reports as frequently as possible, even if they're not lengthy, and we give the council a summary of what our feelings and our intents are, and that way we can respect any concerns it has about what we're working on, but at the same time, we're gonna let the council know that within our resolution and municipal code, we will address committee work as we see appropriate, in the context that we're afforded. And I think more frequent communication will help set that tone with perhaps some of my colleagues.
I believe one thing is, is that we need to figure out a way, because I know you guys can't all be in the same room at the same time, right, as far as city council people. But I do believe it's important for a city council to show up and interact here. I do believe that part of what we really are struggling with is firsthand information and communication so much, you know? But, at the end of the day, I don't, you know, this is what I don't want. I don't wanna get into a fistfight with the city council, right? We wanna be able to, you know, I wanna work with them, right? And so, it seems to me that it's important for them to actually feel some level of participation. They're gonna be overseeing our projects, or what we do or don't do. And I'd imagine they can hear this on YouTube, but I really would like to hear how they too would like to see this committee, because, you know, maybe they got ideas, but I do think that this committee, and the city council, the city council should be able to lend their ideas to this committee, as to what they feel would be a good idea, or not good idea, either way. But, to me, I think that's a bridge, I just want to make sure it's a fluid relationship. Like you say, you know, we should report to them on, even in small, I think in a way, even if it's in a small blur, they should report, and let us know what they thinking about, we should do too, you know? So we can have some idea of what we're even working with, because I just seem like, it always feels like, when you're always just reporting to somebody, you're almost going into everything blind, and you never know what they feeling, and you gotta wait to hear about it. I'm 54, you're not gonna give me a heart attack. So I want more communication, even with them feedback, you know, because they partly approve this committee. And if you approve, then you get it for a reason, I mean, I hope. And so hopefully, they wanna, you know, find their own little niche within this committee, you know? I think this committee can be a valuable and important part of city affairs in the long run, but I think a lot of it starts off with how you get off the ground communicating, you know? So I just feel like that, I wanna make sure that's clear with them, that I like that fluidity, a little bit more consistency, you know? I don't want people to just show up here when there's a row, or something, but also just a normality of saying, this is important to me. You get it?
Yes, thank you. Am I able to, Ms. Jacobson, discuss, even though it's not on the agenda, what may be convenient times for a future meeting date?
Yes, you can plan another meeting, and then you can declare the meeting adjourned, or take a motion, either way.
And the sequence of those events?
On record for all to see. I think you can ask, or you can adjourn, and then ask, since you didn't put it on there, and it's not required that you do, but I understand, since you're reconvening, you wanna pull the new appointees for possible meeting times, if they know while they sit here, so you could, I'd take a motion to adjourn, and then ask about their availability, or you could have the clerk's office reach out to them by email to pull their availability for the next meeting.
First, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Mr. Hurd, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Yola. So, we're adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes unanimously, we'll adjourn, and then.